Thank you, Chelsea and Chuck. Uh, we'll go ahead at this time and call the council meeting to order. Roll call, James?
Josh Earl.
Present.
Gwen Hoffman.
Present.
Mitch Magnus.
Present.
Larry Phillips.
Present.
Charlie Pierce.
Present.
Reed Petty.
Present.
Joel Williams.
Present.
Wayne Cohn.
Present.
And you have a full boat.
Okay, thank you. Wayne Cohn, would you pray for us, please?
I will do it. Will you please stand? Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you this evening and thank you for this day that you've given us. But we thank you for those in attendance tonight, and we just ask that you be with us as we make decisions for the city of Harrison and that. Give us the wisdom that we need to make the right decisions. Go with us and direct us through this meeting in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in worship.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, be seated, please. All right, uh, I need an approval of the minutes for July tenth, please.
So move.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that takes care of that. Department reports. I think they're gonna be fairly short tonight, uh, due to everything we have on the agenda. Uh, Chief Grady.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I've laid a report there if we all look at. There's, uh, nothing out of the ordinary on it. You have any questions about it, I'll let you know. At this time, uh, one thing I did want to mention, um, school starting back, obviously, August eleventh. We have some, uh, instruction up there, but we had a, we had a meeting last week with, uh, Dr. Pratt and his team, construction team, Wade, uh, and our SROs. Uh, we're gonna do our best to make it as smooth as possible, but, uh, we'll be asking for patience and we do ask, if you don't have business on Goblin Drive during school, take another route. I mean, it's kind of that simple.
Okay, Chiefs, thank you.
Can I make a comment in regard to that?
Of course.
Um, first of all, Wade and the chief have worked so well with Dr. Pratt and the school district and his plan. For those people that are complaining online or complaining by phone call, uh, this is the price to progress. Everybody's been complaining about Goblin Drive. Well, to fix it, this is what you're gonna have to go through. So, uh, they're doing the best they can with what they have. Uh, I'm very, uh, the city and, and the police are gonna have extra, uh, enforcement in that area to help us to keep the, our students safe. And I, I wanna, like I say, for everybody, just hold on.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Wade, Public Works?
I guess I can echo what Chief Grady from Councilman Magnus said. Uh, as far as the Goblin Drive, we, you know, construction is underway, uh, Kraus has got things going. Uh, we'll leave all the utilities are out of the way, at, at least in the area that we really need to be working, so I expect to see quite a bit more activity over the next few weeks and then as we get into school, we'll, we'll continue to work with the district, which they have been absolutely fantastic to work with. Um, I can't say enough about that, just the insight as far as helping with traffic and coming up with our plans. As we, as we do that, they know more about it than really we do, how things work within their parking lots and things like that, so they've been invaluable. Um, and yes, it's gonna require a lot of patience. Um, and this is, I, I hate to tell people, this is just, I mean, I don't hate to say it, but this is just the start. I mean, we've got a twenty-five million dollar highway project coming up that'll probably start next year. But we're all gonna be impacted by it and have to have a lot of patience for it, so there's just, there's a lot coming, there's a lot going on. Um, with the agenda, we'll try to keep it quick. Uh, Camp Jack project is nearing completion, substantial completion certificate has been issued. We actually had a meeting today to go over some, you know, smaller stuff, just wrapping things up. Uh, hope to have everything in for contract within two to three weeks as far as closeout documents. Then we can get that project closed out. Uh, Camp Jack has already started occupying the building, so they're, they're having the joy of moving back into where they were. Uh, but, uh, Matt looked pretty worn out, but I saw him earlier today after we all did all that. Um, Creekside Trail, all easements are in and prepped and have been sent to RDOT for approval, so that's our last step uh, before we can acquire the easements and get that thing bid out. Really the last, last real bureaucratic step, I think, before we can trudge ahead in that. Uh, most of my departments are in routine swinging things for the summer, just routine maintenance on water and sewer. Uh, street department's working on a drainage project over in the Tamaran area. That's one of a handful I'm trying to squeeze in before weather turns on us this winter. Um, and I will, the only other update is, well, two more updates. I mentioned the highway widening project. We are focusing on getting our final plans done for relocation. With those, we'll come to estimates in the sticker shop of what we're gonna have to pay to relocate water and sewer to get out of the way of that project. Uh, I don't have good numbers yet, but I'm just gonna give you a heads up that over the next month, probably the next two months, I'll be bringing that in for the council, council with, uh, proposal on how we're gonna pay for it. Um, 'cause when, when highways widen, they do projects, utilities have to go out of the way, and if it's not reimbursable, that utility is gonna be the one that has to put the bill. Most of what we're looking at is not gonna be reimbursable. Um, and then the last thing, probably in September, I'm hoping to bring a proposal uh, for water and sewer rate studies, uh, so that we can get that going. That's something that we will have to have completed uh, at some point next year as part of, uh, state law that was passed a few years ago. I've, I've delayed it as long as I can, um, just because one, to kind of see how other utilities are managing and dealing with it. We've been watching a lot of places in Northwest Arkansas after they go through this. Fifty percent rate increases, hundred percent rate increases over a five-year period, so um, that's one that we'll have to keep a close eye on. We'll have to make sure we get the right people in to do this rate study with us.
Wade, we've been saying this for years and years and years and years. At some point, we're gonna experience what other people have been experiencing, 'cause we just have a CPI index increase every year, and you're just waiting for it to hit. There's not a single municipality in the state of Arkansas that is seeing their water rates go down, not one.
No, and, and, and the rate increases that we're seeing, and what I refer to the rate study in the state law, state law was passed a few years ago that outlines how we are supposed to establish rates. And so we had so long to get our rate studies done. Um, and so that, that time limit is coming up, so we're gonna have to do it. And basically, anything up to a fifty percent increase would have to be implemented within a year. Um, if it's over fifty percent, then you can start spreading it out.
Wade, um, is this just water purchase, or is it water infrastructure?
Water, it's water and sewer of the rights that our customers pack, well, we learned that now.
But what does that go for? Is that, is that just purchase power, or is that infrastructure or a little bit of both?
That will be, so what, what it's gonna take into account is, one, our cost of water since we can purchase, purchase it. Uh, and then, two, the cost of maintenance, as well as the cost of future plans for rehabilitation, expansion, things like that. That all gets rolled into this process that comes up with what our rates need to be over the next five.
They have formulated, this is what you need to be doing.
They, they've laid out some, the, the, the basic minimum requirements that these rate studies have to follow, and so that's where, that's where we're headed. Um, it'd be, it'll be an unpleasant process, and what I've been seeing, uh, several of the cities around the state have to go through. Nobody likes raising rates, but the foresight of council in the past to at least initiate the CPI annually is gonna help ease that burden a little bit. Um, other than that, be happy to answer any questions, but I'll.
Okay, Wade, thank you. Uh, let's go on to Chief Samson.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Uh, for the month of June, our operations division responded to two hundred eighty-three incidents. They guys conducted thirty-five fire inspections of commercial properties. We issued twenty new business license and issued twenty-eight construction permits and conducted fifty construction permits. Everybody should have a copy of the report in front of you if you got any questions.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's go. Do we have Luke with us?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, uh, main thing to report out of accounting, um, sales tax numbers are in. Uh, this would be for May sales. We had top five in both county and city. Uh, top five months. Uh, again, we keep reporting it. Glad to, glad to be able to tell everybody that. It's just always good news whenever we seem to be reporting sales tax, so everything else, I think, will come a little later out of accounting.
Okay, Luke, thank you. You'll stay with us through the whole meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, Chuck, you have anything?
I mean, I definitely want to report our numbers for Creekside.
Oh, yeah.
We're at forty-nine fifty-eight. I didn't tell council last time we had a meeting, but we did partner with Valley Springs School, and their school district is going to pa- buy a pass for all their families with this sort of partnership. That's gonna put us way over our goal for what, five thousand for twenty-twenty-five? So Luke's already gave me seven thousand now by December, so I'm gonna work for that.
Oh, no.
No, I'm good. Luke, me and Luke are really excited and made about these numbers, also. I really wanted to talk about that. Also, at the CATPC meeting this morning, uh, found out in May, uh, the numbers, we broke the all-time restaurant sale numbers for May. Uh, are actually every month, so we were over seventy thousand in taxes for restaurants, which was amazing, so excited about that.
Three different restaurants told me it was the best weekend and best day they ever had in their history. Three different restaurants told me that.
We're, we're knocking it out of the park, like Luke said, like the sales tax, we just want to keep giving good updates. Uh, we hosted two national tournaments in July with over three hundred teams from thirteen different states. Uh, I'm just gonna throw this number at you. This is the best we've ever done in the concession sales, and those two weeks, we made forty-four thousand dollars gross sale at our, just at our upper concession stand. It's outstanding. Uh, we had a, we had a swim meet in July, on July tenth, with sixty to seventy participants at that. Um, I just put in two bids for a wrestling tournament, uh, in November first and November eighth, so I'll hear about that. Hopefully in September, whether we're awarded one of those or not, which will be somewhere between four hundred to six hundred participants. Um, and then we have another basketball tournament coming up August ninth and tenth. Right now, uh, the numbers today, we're between fifty and sixty teams come to that, so we're, we're really excited about the events we're having since we've opened up Creekside, for sure. And then the last thing I'm gonna talk about is the Creekside app, we're having a concert tomorrow night. Um, it'll be Heavy Wrecker will start at six, and then Royal Lynn will start after them, and then Saving Abel is our main act tomorrow night. So if you wanna come to that, we'd love you to come support that Creekside amp and come to the concert. Uh, other than that, that's all I got unless you guys got any questions for me. Thank you.
Okay, Chuck, thank you. Um, I think you might be the end of that.
Is David Wilson?
No, David's not reporting tonight.
Yeah. That's the only reason I showed up.
I know, I know. Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, let's go on to business. Here we go, folks. Uh, budget adjustment, that goes to you, Mitch.
Yep. Wade, could I, uh, ask you to step up once again? Uh, the first, uh, budget adjustment, uh, is pretty much self-explanatory, but you wanna cover it all, or just for public record?
Yeah, one of our, one of our guys in the buildings and grounds department is gonna be out for several weeks, um, and so it's kind of a bad time of year to be down with one, so this budget adjustment, and it affects two different accounts, so there's two budget adjustments in here. Uh, it's basically to bring on a temporary for that time, uh, to help with the mowing and then just the normal summer stuff that these guys are familiar with.
We're, we're showing it in one account, though.
Uh, got, so I've got the first page.
Okay, got it. I got you.
For just payroll, and then we've also got the account with payroll tax.
Okay. This time, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the budget adjustment for eight thousand four hundred dollars in the first account. Six, six hundred and fifty dollars from the second account.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. Mitch, we'll carry on with you.
The next one is, uh, milling and overlay, uh, contract, and Wade, if you could go through this one, 'cause you and I didn't have a chance to go on this in detail.
Okay, so, uh, earlier this year, we bid out and approved a contract for, um, several miles of asphalt overlay on C Streets. Um, that, that original bid and contract was one million seventeen thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars and forty cents. Um, so in order to go ahead and get the budget adjusted to that, uh, I've got two of them here. One would be out of the street department, and that is increase in the, uh, fifty-two, two-seventy-eighth line item, which is street repairs.
Right.
Um, increase of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, on the other one, which is infrastructure account, uh, for, for overlays, um, I've got a budget adjustment in there of seven hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty cents. Now, those of you that are really quick in math know those two numbers. They'll add up to the one point oh one seven million, but I mentioned they're if you're that quick in math. Uh, I am requesting an extra fifty thousand, um, on this line item so that we can pay, uh, the compost pad. It's in pretty bad shape. We've kind of been putting it off the last couple of years. We've had some areas. Unfortunately, when it was originally built years ago, it was done in the area that had already built up with not the best fill, and so a lot of that has since we, we got settling and subgrade failure, so we're getting all that cleaned up. And then the extra fifty thousand is the cost to, to do the extra asphalt.
So the question I didn't get to ask you during the discussion is, where is it located? Is it the city?
The, the compost facility is located out at City Farm, uh, kind of the old west side of it. So that's where we take all of the brush leaves, stuff that gets collected over the years, stuff that gets taken out to LRS, it goes out there and gets chipped and goes through our compost.
So the rest of the, uh, increase in, in the, for the milling is what we'd already discussed as far as the grief that you gave us a list for.
Yes, sir.
Okay. This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget adjustment for, uh, an increase of four hundred and fifty thousand to account fifty-two, two-seventy-eighth and seven hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty cents to account number five-seven-zero-zero-zero.
Second.
Now, we have a motion and a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Move on to the change order, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we have a change order. Wade, once again, can you?
Uh-huh.
Go through it with us?
Yes, this is one of the fun occasions where I'm asking for less money. Um, this is a change order, change pipe materials on the Goblin Drive project. Uh, we originally bid it out using RCP, uh, concrete pipe. Um, Kraus, worked with Kraus, uh, they are willing to offer credit so that we can switch to an AC TV pipe. Um, that gives two real good benefits. One, it is a deduct of all of the hundred and seventy thousand dollars on the contract. And two, it's a lot easier to work with. Um, so that will actually help with the speed of construction as the project progresses. And really, the third benefit is it's become my preferred soil water pipe that will probably back up.
Useful life is about the same, the life?
I would argue that it's probably gonna last longer.
Okay. This time, make a motion to approve the change order in the amount, the decrease. And that's the minutes, note that it's a decrease of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. Mitch, that's it?
Yep.
All right, uh, we're going into an item here. I'm gonna turn it over to Gwen.
The city received a request from House of Hope to end the lease on that property.
That's correct. Uh, I received a letter last week from William Tolet asking us to terminate their lease effective August fifteenth. And you all should have a copy of that letter.
This is the property located at six hundred East Stevenson.
Correct.
To entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion?
This is just to end their lease, right?
That's correct. Mm-hmm. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. Uh, now we're gonna go down to something. Wayne, uh, I hope you can explain this. I believe this is James White's.
Okay.
You got it?
Uh, yeah, I've got several here. James, before we start on this, do we have any requested to speak on any of these?
Uh, we do have on items H and I, but not on the ordinance.
Okay. The first one coming up is ordinance one-five-four-zero. This is ordinance clarifying election procedure for city officers and declaring an emergency. And at this time, I would, uh, make a motion, we suspend the rules and put this on first reading of title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion?
It, what, is this a change? Because I thought this was the standard procedure.
Uh, yeah, James, would you like to comment?
I, I was contacted by the, uh, uh, county clerk's office, the election center, and they had been contacted by the State Board of Election Commissioners saying that the, the city needed an ordinance on the books that specified that, uh, all voters vote for all city officers regardless of what ward they live in, as opposed to them uh, voting ward specific. And I, I talked to the Board of Election Commissioners, and, uh, they, they said that, uh, the, even though the city code does say that all voters will, beginning in nineteen sixty-six, that the voters would elect council members every two years. Uh, nonetheless, they said that that probably was not act, uh, was not adequate, and we needed to be more specific on that.
With that said, then we need clarification, although we vote at large as citizens, you still have to reside within the ward in which you.
Exactly.
So it does that in here, but we haven't made that publicly known, so.
Yeah.
You know, Ward one, Ward two, the two of us.
And that, that goes for when you file for election and also while serving. And that's, that's in, uh, Arkansas code in the, uh, the second portion.
Okay.
So this is just more clarification in the wording, being more clear.
Exactly, yes.
Yeah.
It's just ceremonial almost.
Hey, do we have a motion?
We do have a motion.
We do, in the second floor.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes.
In favor of ordinance clarifying election procedures for city officers and declaring an emergency.
At this time, I'd make a motion that we suspend the rules, place this ordinance on its second and third reading by title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Important to clarify election procedures for city officers and declaring an emergency.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Motion to enact the emergency clause.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Motion passes.
Okay, Mayor, next one on mine is, we're gonna switch to resolutions. It's resolution number thirteen twenty-six. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to make application to the Arkansas Department of Parks, Heritage and Tourism for an outdoor recreation matching grant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion? That's the grant that.
Yeah, this is the grant that, uh, Chuck mentioned earlier, but it doesn't specify the amount of the grant in here. We were applying for five hundred thousand. Did it not specify that amount?
It would in the resolution.
Well, the resolution is to authorize the mayor to make applications.
Right.
Okay. We have a motion and a second? Do we?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. All right. Wayne, here's the good one.
The next one is resolution number thirteen twenty-seven. This is a resolution authorizing qualification-based selection for the requirement or procurement of real estate agent services.
Motion to approve the resolution is presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion?
So, uh, question on this, is this the process that we're going to start following? Or is it, are we changing what we have in place? I thought we were gonna be looking at what we had in place tonight as well.
I think it depends, um, on a lot of situations. Nancy, would you wanna comment?
Where any formal procedure that's been adopted is.
No, there's no fact.
On the basis of which property we were discussing, and, uh.
So there's no process for us to review or look at procedures?
There's not. She'd allow, uh, the city to dispose of assets by private sale, any type of an auction, or, um, by listing with an agent. So options can include the city could undertake to catalog surplus properties, advertise and handle that in-house. Um, or you can undertake and hire a professional that would catalog, document, advertise and promote those for sale. Or you can do a public auction, or you can, there's a wide variety of ways that are authorized under the law. Um, but we don't get, have in place a routine or a process, and I, I hope that we start identifying surplus property and, and take action one way or the other on it. And to do that, we need to figure out who's going to handle it, so.
Yeah.
And I think our original intent, if, Mayor, uh, the city attorney will confirm for me, what we wanted to do, Wade included in this discussion. We wanted to catalog any surplus property in the, and handle it in the same manner. Correct?
That would be, that would be ideal. Um, we do, of course, already have two properties and perhaps now three that are ready and available, and I would offer the quickest way for us to see if they are going to sell at their current appraised values, or to have a professional start trying to sell under a six-month contract for instance, to see, um, because you know, it may be that the appraised values aren't reflective of the current market and may need to be reconsidered in the future, but we're not going to know that unless we have someone actively trying to sell. Um.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I certainly agree that, given what we had occur, that we wanna be a little bit more transparent, and I still say that no one did anything wrong. Wade, the mayor, the city attorney, anybody did anything wrong? That auction, uh, didn't turn out like anybody expected. And I think this is a more transparent way and give everybody the opportunity to make an offer. Again, and I will remind, uh, and certainly the mayor is aware of this, given his, uh, experience. We don't have to take s- simply the highest price, the highest offer. We can designate for whatever reason, uh, civic use or whatever, when we approve uh, whatever, uh, the real estate agent brings to us, correct?
As long as, as long as fair market value is established, it can be sold at a discount, for instance, to charitable organizations or for other purposes, economic development. As long as there's an accounting of what value you've placed upon a contribution from, it needs to be detailed, and it needs to be assessed a value, and as long as you're making fair market value, then that's good stewardship of taxpayer money, but it has to be accounted and listed and identified what's the specific benefit for the taxpayer needs.
Sure, and that's whether we hire a realtor or not.
Right. And, and there again, I'll say this. Uh, we've discussed this multiple times, that we need to get out of the, the rent to, uh, five oh one C organizations. That's ultimately what we want to get out of, because I have people ask me all the time, why can't my group get a, a city building for a dollar?
Sure.
A- another benefit of having a, uh, qualified real estate agent is the identification of surplus properties. Those that the city is aware of, that would regularly use, are easy to identify. There are a large number of pieces of property that may belong to the city. There are a large number of pieces of property that may belong to the city as part of the urban renewal program and other such programs. That aren't clearly identified because they're not assessed for taxes. Most common way that anyone finds out is through tax assessment data, if they're not assessed to the city. They aren't on a list anywhere as belonging to the city and. Those types of things are something that. I'm unaware of anyone that has the time to go look through the D M X books and catalog those. But a qualified real estate professional may have resources to do that.
So at the, at the beginning of this, you said there was a way that we could legally do it, I mean, one of the ways was having a real estate agent. Sell it, so what what is the purpose of doing this one then?
Which one?
Doing this resolution, if we've already, if it's already an option.
They'll allow Wade to put out a request for qualifications from all the realtors.
Okay.
And they'll submit a request and we'll choose who they are. Yeah. Now, I kinda wondered the same thing, Josh, but it's part of the process.
Okay, if I may, um so this establishes that we're going to treat real estate services as a professional service. Um we've got procurement laws, how we buy anything, when everything, get quotes, your bids, and stuff like that. This is a hard one to goes to, you know, a group of realtors and say, okay, give me your price to sell this building. Um so certain professional services, state law actually prohibits bids, quotes, and fire the qualification based selections. That's gonna be your lawyers, engineers, architects, stuff like that, construction managers. Um it doesn't specifically list real estate services. But it provides provision to where a council can can use qualification based selection for a service. Um if they deem that professional, that this resolution in a way does that and I will point out, it does require a super majority. Per state law in order for us to authorize the the QBS, the qualification based selection for real estate services. In this, in what, in the, you know, the proposal, the draft I have for a request for qualifications. Would set it up to where, as the attorney said, it was, you know, we would receive qualifications in from. Anyone that wants to submit, because we'll publicly advertise it and send it out. And then we'll have those qualifications on file, so when we do need something that will qualify as real estate services. And we can go through and see who the best fit is, whether that's selling a building, whether that is working on a surplus inventory. Or just an overall plan for disposing of of real estate property, if we think that the real estate agent would be the best fit.
And in the context of what you just said, we could have multiple.
Yes.
Uh essentially on retain, multiple agents on retainer.
Yes, and we would, and it's, and it's, it's the way I handle, you know, other professional services that I had on call annually for. Or buying annually for different professional services, surveying architecture, things like that. Um that way, when something comes up, you've already done your due diligence. Uh to take in those proposals, qualifications from interested parties and then you can make the selection based off of the best fit. For exactly what it is, you can put that play.
Okay, do we have a uh, we have a motion?
So, yeah.
And we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, uh that passes, now Wayne's gonna tell you a little bit about one of the other three options we have.
Okay, the next one is the resolution number one three two eight, the resolution authorizing. The sale of certain city owned real property and for other purposes.
And for, and for this, you do have two uh agenda item speakers, first is Bob Largent.
Okay, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and and Council, um. With regard to uh this resolution that you will be uh motioning and probably voting on. I am Bob Largent, I am serving as the Chair of the Board of Directors. Of the five oh one C three Recovery Center of the Ozarks, several members of our Board of Directors are also with us this evening. Based upon the proposed uh resolution. Uh I I on behalf of the board would like to recommend to the council that the Recovery Center of the Ozarks. Have a temporary lease for six hundred East Stevenson Avenue. From August fifteenth, the termination of the lease or earlier. Through the probable sale of the property. Using the basics of the existing lease that exists with the House of Hope. Why would we recommend that? The benefits to the city is that having the building occupied until the sale. Having utilities paid through the sale. Keeping the building up, both inside and out, mowing and so on. And prohibiting the unauthorized use of the property. By anyone not so authorized. All of these benefits will enhance the sale price of that particular problem uh property. I would also indicate to you the benefit to the RCO. It provides uh our present offices and classroom have lost its air conditioning unit. We are being given that by a local Harrison businessman. The cost is estimated well above ten thousand dollars to redo that. Second benefit is that this facility would provide adequate space for life skills learning. Not only for the RCO residents, but for the community at large. And increase that opportunity for the community based programs. Uh the lease could terminate on fourteen days notice at closing. And the RCO, RCO needs access to this property either before or earlier than August fifteen.
Okay, Bob, um we are not considering a lease.
I understand, so this is a temporary lease.
Not considering a temporary lease. That's not what's on the agenda, the agenda is to sell the property. And if we sell the property and if we approve this tonight, um we can close by August fifteenth.
If someone meets the.
We, we have a a qualified buyer.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Um, okay, uh and folks, let me explain this to you. Uh because we are, like Nancy explained, there's three ways we can sell, this happens to be one. Uh when that came available, we knew the need was out there for these folks, Rodney and Bob and Steve. Um, we uh we talked about identifying value. And Nancy and I happened to uh go through and find three comps. And it was very easy to do because there were three comps right on that same street, which I wouldn't have believed. Uh so we called a very qualified realtor to put those together and create a. Not an official appraisal, but a broker's opinion. And we came up with a price of one thirty four, hundred and thirty four thousand. And we have a buyer right now prepared to buy and close at one thirty four. And that's what I'm asking for, is a motion to approve that sale to take place.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there, there is another commenter.
Okay.
Kelsey Brand.
Kelsey, come on up.
Hi, this is Kelsey Brand and I was here two weeks ago with the auction for the surplus properties. I was under the impression that we were here tonight to discuss having realtors' best interest in selling the properties. I was told during the meeting, whenever my bid was too low, that we were going off appraisal. So in that we would have the, the city would be open to being sued if you guys did take mine off. So tonight, I'm just wondering, I'm kind of under the impression that we're doing a private sale, but we have no appraisal. So my question is, are we not opening ourselves up to being sued again?
Oh, I don't think we're gonna be sued, this was uh after uh uh connecting with Nancy. Oh, we, uh let me say, first of all, I didn't put a lot of faith in the appraisal on your property, did you?
I didn't.
Of course not, of course not.
The answer is I completely.
We identified fair market value and that's really what we're, our job is to identify fair market value. And if we can do that and make a sale and help a local group. I think it's a wise thing to do.
So my question is, what is fair market value on the property, the old senior center? And if there is a fair market value that you've come up with, why wasn't it offered to me as a counter or anything like that, or is that just not? Not in our processes, but we don't have any process.
We don't have, we, we only had the appraisal on the property that you offered to buy. And that's when we decided to go with a realtor, we could go with a realtor on this. And say, here's the value, one thirty four, and they turn around and sell it. And we get one twenty, uh but we have a buyer on hand that wants to pay that price, so there's no reason to go to the realtor.
So how do, how does one get to be the buyer on hand?
Um. Uh you can buy that property at appraised price. And of course, you don't wanna do that and I don't blame you, now, if you're still interested in that property that you was rejected on. Uh I'd recommend, after we choose a realtor, they list it and you put in an offer.
So if I'm interested in another property that the city owns, just as, you know, obviously I'm nothing against the the rehab facility whatsoever, but. Just as they were, you know, interested in the House of Hope property.
Right, right.
I mean, what is our process there? We just have to.
Very interested in that property and they wanted to lease it, I think pretty much like Bob said. We decided we don't want to lease property.
So, let me, let me, so you're asking what if you wanna buy?
What if I wanted to purchase it?
To, to buy the House of Hope building.
How, how do, how do we get in the know? That's what I'm asking as, as a taxpayer, as a person of, you know, citizens, how do we get in the know? Like some of the other people, I feel like are in the know.
I don't know, I guess our job is to get fair market value and I believe we're getting that.
How do we know?
Is what, Kelsey?
Know the property is available, I didn't know that the property was available.
Yeah, I don't think we're required, Nancy.
The, the council terminated the lease.
So who like?
Many, many cities will go through the process of putting out surplus properties on the list, which I hope that's what we're creating. And then everyone has the opportunity to uh make an inquiry, you can put a deadline for requests for proposals. So let's say, for instance, someone says, September first, please turn in your request for proposal because we're going to choose someone. You know.
But we didn't do that with this property, right?
It was not available until the vote today.
So how, and my question is only is, how, how were they made aware that the property was going to become available August fifteen?
They were trying to lease it and we said, we don't wanna lease it, we'd be happy to sell it.
So then it was offered to them to be sold.
Correct.
So is it not fair to be offered to anybody else to be sold, competitive bidding?
Probably not.
It's, that's not, that's not.
Okay, your time's up, Kelsey, thank you, um we have a, a, a motion.
I think Mr. Wyatt had a comment.
I don't think so.
Uh we, I have had a request from, from Steve Turner who did not sign up prior to the meeting. And he wanted to know if uh if he could make a comment and. The city attorney tells me that that probably requires a vote of the council to.
I would be fine with that if you would make a motion. Okay. Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor to let Steve speak? Thank you, yes, Steve, thank you.
Three minutes, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, the uh fact is, we are interested in the property and as you may as well make it. Very well known, I am. There's one thing we don't know about and we don't have an answer yet, the cost of flood insurance. That's the big hiccup we've got, we don't have an answer yet, so I'm just pointing this out that until we get that number. Or what we can do to offset that number, then I'm not willing to step forward and buy this property because of the cost to RCO.
Okay, so you wanna rescind your offer and that can put us back, Kelsey, you can be a player maybe.
Consider declaring this a surplus property. So that it can follow whatever process has been to handle it.
And that's really what the resolution is calling for, declared a surplus property.
Well, and it also says that you.
Authorizing the, the mayor to negotiate a sale of the property.
Be admitted in any way, shape or form because it is a resolution of the council, so you can make it say it.
And we can leave it like that and I'll negotiate a sale at for fair market value.
Do we know what the fair market value was on the other two properties?
They had appraisals on the other two properties and one of the appraisals was totally wrong.
Right.
One of them appeared to be, in my opinion, and I've got an education in that area, one appraisal was real good. One appraisal was totally wrong.
So why would we not go forward with an appraisal on, on this property?
I, I wouldn't, because I believe a realtor with three comps on the same block. Will give us as good, if not better, number than an appraiser. The appraiser could pick something off that block, I mean, they do it all the time, that's obviously what they did with the other property. Uh I, I put more faith in the realtor than I do in appraiser, that's just my opinion, I'm a little partial to that, but.
So, and so now that we're this far down the road, I have to ask, we, we've just adopted a policy. That a resolution that we would choose a realtor, we're not gonna do it with this piece of property and I understand what you're saying. But are we opening that up to anybody that wants to come in and negotiate with the mayor for the fair market?
That's what this would have done, but we did have a buyer, now that we don't have a buyer. I am more than happy to go with the realtor on this property.
I think we really need to step back and set a procedure here.
Consistency.
Consistency, so yes, I would like to see.
I don't think you can do that, Gwen, there are circumstances that don't allow you to follow the same procedures. And that's kinda what Nancy explained, I mean, we can auction, we can list with a realtor.
But involving your public and them having the opportunity to these properties is what is key.
Council can choose a procedure that's preferred, within the, the overall options that are available under the state law. Council can choose a procedure and a process for handling surplus properties. And it can be a different process for uh vacant lots versus uh houses. Versus commercial buildings, versus things in the flood plain, but you can set aside and say first. So let's identify a surplus, so for instance, today, council could consider identified as a surplus property. That it's not needed for municipal operations, it's in the best interest that it be declared surplus property. And then, then have it follow uh the process of being considered by a realtor. Now, once a realtor is chosen, they may choose fair, they may in their professional opinion say fair market value can be determined. By analysis and market comps.
We adopted resolution thirteen twenty seven a few minutes ago. Shouldn't that apply in this case as it does to the other cases that uh apply to surplus?
Could add that to that group?
It doesn't apply because it's a different, we, we still have those three options.
We still have those three options, Jen.
And you can move this back to the other option of putting it in with a realtor. The fact that we had a buyer but don't have a buyer, that makes a difference. So if we didn't have a buyer, I, we would have recommended that we add it to the real estate agents.
Let's have the city attorney once again, and I, I agree with everything we're saying here, I want consistency and so anybody in the public. Go approach this property, but let's make sure there's clar- clarity here, so if you would go through one more time, I'm sorry to ask you to do that. The ways in which we can surplus these properties.
We want you specifically to address the resolution that's proposed.
I want you to say how, what are the ways in which a city can dispose of surplus property?
Okay. Without pulling up the actual statute, there are at least three ways, and there are several attorney general opinions that discuss it and there's been a change in the law in twenty seventeen. We can sell by public auction. We can sell by private sale or transfer assets by private transfer. Or we can list it with a professional and have them undertake the process to sell the property. There are other options, those are just the three most common. What we can't do is a sealed bid sale of property because F O I A sealed bids in consideration. There's really no such thing for that transfer process.
So you're saying all of these have to be open and accessible to the public before, uh, yeah, inclusion is reached, correct?
No.
No.
Because we actually negotiate transfer and sale contracts all the time without, putting it out for publication. Because there's a process in place for how we do it. So for instance, if a bid isn't required, um, public works department may undertake to purchase something from someone without bringing it back for publication and council. We, we do that routinely, but this is a bigger item. Just because the law allows something doesn't mean council has to have that as its process. It means it's one of the many options you can consider.
So, and again, for clarity, we passed resolution thirteen twenty-seven saying that we're going to take surplus property and offer it to Realtor after requests for qualifications that we can. That we can.
Correct.
But the mayor also, if, for example, in this case, we could say, you go out and sell it. Go get us the best, best buyer for it.
Right.
I think the council's point here is we want to have a consistency, and we want everybody in the public, if Liz Torgerson wants to, to buy it, she should have a right to negotiate just as much as, uh, Mr. Turner. Now, we can, the mayor can pick Mr. Turner and bring it to the council. And that's it.
And.
We either approve it or don't approve it.
And if that's the desire of council, then I recommend that you classify it as a surplus property and specifically say you desire it to be put in the pool of surplus properties to be handled by the qualified professional.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do we, do we have a second? Okay, any discussion on this? And we're talking about virtually just adding it to the group above.
Okay, so just to clarify, we're talking about thirteen twenty-eight.
Yeah.
And it mentions just saying it's, it shall be offered for sale at the price. Fair market value. So does that still qualify for this?
So this is just a draft resolution on the basis of, um, what was anticipated to be brought to council?
And Steve has withdrawn, right? Correct, I mean, that's.
That's correct.
Hundred percent, okay.
That's correct.
And, and even if not, council has the authority to do their will. So, um, if, what I think I hear council saying is, you would simply be approving section one, and, uh, section two and three would be removed. And set, a new section two would simply say it's to be added to the catalog of surplus properties to be considered over disposal by the qualified real estate professional.
You have a motion on the floor to accept it as, as is essentially. So we would have to rescind that or amend it. And only Mr. Patty can do that.
Was intended to amend.
Thanks.
We're amending to remove section two and three, correct?
Updating section two.
Removing section three.
Oh, so you will remove part of the, where it is, right?
Boy, this is clear as mud.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to prepare another draft and that, um?
Hey, we can bring this back in two weeks. Yeah, let's just.
Can we table it?
Yeah, table, table.
You got a motion on the floor.
Motion was drawn.
Okay, that's good. We'll bring this back in two weeks with our recommendation.
I would like to see, again, for clarification, I see we have city properties. Make this a little more fluid as, you know, here are three options. Let's identify what those properties might look like. This one may go this avenue, this one that avenue, and that. I would love to see that, just to get a clearer picture, to see what properties we can ebb and flow, what's going to be best for everybody in, involved. So, uh,
Yeah.
I would just hope to see that.
Now, we had a piece of property for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We had somebody that said they'll pay a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We had other people said they were interested in, and I think it actually went to auction. And, um.
Still didn't sell.
We, still didn't sell. But when we had the full offer, we didn't accept it at that point because other people were interested. I think the point is that we need to do a better job of notifying folks that these properties are for sale. And, um, I think that's important.
Council will consider in the future as well as, we have had the issue in the last four months of adjacent lots owned by the city. And in the past, city has always gone and made a, a request for private sale to the adjacent landowner. You know, that's an exception that has happened this calendar year. So.
Yeah.
Parts to it.
Like to ask a question if I may, directed to Roger and Franklin and other real estate agents that may be on this. Are we on the right track with our thinking here?
I mean, transparency is a great thing for the communities. And I think the council would like to make sure they get, um, market value for the property. So I, I admire each one for handling this tonight and giving a little bit more thought into it. Uh, I don't know, honestly, for everybody, but, uh, I agree.
Roger, your thoughts?
Uh, Roger, you got the wrong Roger.
What about Cindy?
Mr. Turner, your thoughts?
No.
My thoughts? My thoughts are, I'm still a liar. Spent the past five days, what we've got to go through and accomplish between mayor, our board, and the city attorney. And the only hiccup we got is the cost of the insurance.
Yeah, and, and folks, I, I think the unfortunate thing here, we have a group that's been in town doing great things. And they now have a facility without air conditioning, and they were hoping to get moved into a new one. I told them we weren't interested in leasing it. And so they came back and wanted to buy it. And I think that made a lot of sense. They had the need, they're a great community, uh, people in town. And Steve stepped up and said, I'll buy it. And we determined the price. I thought the price was going to be a hundred. It came in at a hundred and thirty-four. He said, I'll take it anyway. These guys need that spot. So, you know.
Mr. Turner, do you foresee that, that you'll be able to get some more, sort, an answer quickly? On the insurance? No, no, what I'm saying is, if you, if you hear back from your insurance, uh, carrier within the next month, and, and it's feasible and the property's still there, because I foresee, I foresee no one else is going to buy it.
I would guess in two weeks, we'd add it to the collection that the real estate agents have. And then Mr. Turner will buy it and we'll get less money.
Well, I'm not, I'm not giving you a time limit of two weeks. I'm just trying to say what kind of timeframe, because I, you know, in the interest of transparency, if somebody else approaches, then we can tell you we have another buyer that's interested at one twelve or whatever. Uh, because the real estate agent has come back with that. We're going to make less money now, but there is transparency. So is that a benefit to the, to the citizens of Harrison? Probably so. Is it worth seven or eight thousand dollar? That'll be up to each citizen to complain to us.
Should we open, uh, again, uh, the, uh, opportunity to Mr. Beaver to temporarily occupy the building?
No.
It's going to be empty.
Because that's temporary lease, we don't want to do that.
As much as I would like to support him in this endeavor, we said we weren't going to lease property to five oh one Cs anymore if we could possibly get away from it. I understand there's always an exception, but I would say we're, we're done until we bring it up next time. In two weeks.
I, I like having a procedure, y'all have heard me preach, at the same time, taking care of your community also has to take a look in consideration in that. Um, there's, there are, there is a lot to this, and it's not just black and white uh, in that. So, uh, I just want our council to keep that in mind too, that.
Well, we're a little bit gun shy with what happened the last time.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So which is, I mean, why we need a procedure.
Right.
Thing in place, so.
That, that's why you're seeing the effect of what council's saying here. Hey, hold on a second.
Guys, Bob wants to make a comment, and I kind of cut him off. So Bob, if you want to finish that.
Just a question on something you said. When did the city council vote to make the decision not to lease any property?
I don't think there was ever a vote. It's just.
The general consensus, I'm, I apologize, Mayor. Can I answer?
No, you go ahead.
There's a general consensus because we, you know, we're approached by lots of individuals that have five oh one C.
Right, yeah.
And we've done a lot of work for Camp Jack and, and the bit, or the, uh, grant that we got with the federal government.
Right.
But does that benefit the citizens of Harrison? Because again, let's say hu, the Humane Society, or the next group comes in and, when do we get our facility for two million dollars?
No, no, I understand.
And so there.
Yeah, I heard, I heard, maybe I misunderstood. You said, we have decided.
No.
We decided not to lease it to you folks. That property. We have not decided we cannot lease a property. We will in the future probably lease another property.
Uh, we're not, we're deciding to not lease the property, period.
That property.
Just to them, but we're not leaving.
That's correct. That's correct.
Yeah, not, it's not just to you.
I understand, I got that, but just for clear, when was that decision made?
I think.
You need to make.
There was, no, no. It was never a decision.
Consensus, as I told the city attorney, what are we doing with all this surplus property that we don't use? And some people, when we have that surplus property, they will come and say, hey, since you've got Camp Jack, you have House of Hope, let me rent this and put in a soup kitchen.
Yeah.
And we said, hold it. We're, we're getting too spread out. And all of a sudden, we're supplying everybody in town that has what they consider their need.
Yeah.
And it's not.
Again, this would just to ensure that, that our board understood that there has not been a vote.
No, no, no. There will be times we will want to lease property. I can assure you that will come.
Probably in just a few minutes, you never.
Man, it's just. All right, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry?
That can be considered on such a property in the meantime is, council could designate a request for proposal be put out that identifies the surplus property and gives a deadline for interested parties to submit proposals for what they would do with the property. That puts it out.
For sale, for sale?
Absolutely. But again, in the future, that could also be used in the consideration of a lease.
True.
But putting it out for sale. If it were to be submitted and offers were made and submitted before a deadline, council could consider it for private sale without submitting for, uh, a real estate commission if you're wanting to dispose of this property quickly. If you're not, there's no reason to hurry it along.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like for, to ask for volunteers to call this dead horse out of the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Mayor, I believe, I believe you, that you will need a motion, uh, and a second, and then a vote to table this.
Yeah. So moved, second.
All in, uh, discussion. All in favor? Good, thank you very much. Uh, okay, guys, here's what we've been waiting for. I'm going to turn it back to Wayne, and Wayne, I hope you turn it back to the mayor.
All right, our next one up is resolution number one, three, two, nine. A resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for grant with the Arkansas Community Assistant Grant Program.
And you have one speaker signed up for this?
Okay.
Dr. Stuart Pratt.
Okay, Dr. Pratt.
Pratt.
Sure. And then, uh, we'll explain a lot more after this, but please stick around. This is one of the biggest deals, biggest opportunity Harrison has probably ever had.
City Council and Mayor, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Uh, resolution thirteen twenty-nine, uh, is asking me, I want to speak on two hats. So I have two tonight, ones for students in the education system, second hats on the Chamber of Commerce, uh, Regional Chamber of Commerce. And let's start with education. No better place to live in Boone County and Harrison, Arkansas. Right now, we have forty-three to forty-five percent of our graduates every year at Harrison will go on to college. Five to eight percent will go into military service. Leading fifty percent, around fifty percent mark will remain here and seeking jobs and employment and a place to build a life. We love that. We want people to stay here. What we're about to talk about in thirteen twenty-nine is a, a chance for economic development to provide jobs for our future youth and have them raise their families, a high wage, high demand job. I think you'll hear that. Secondly, with the Chamber of Commerce, I'm asking you to consider this as another way to economically develop our community and grow and prosper and keep our community moving forward. Again, through the use of jobs, local employment, those dollars return right back into our community and make our community stronger and allow this city council and our forum court as a county to make good decisions and improve Boone County and the Harrison area. So tonight, uh, I'm going to be brief. I'm just asking you to really consider thirteen twenty-nine as a very serious proposal. On behalf of the Chamber of Board of Directors, we think it's very viable, and it's a great opportunity. So thank you for the time.
You're welcome. Okay, tonight, uh, we're going to vote to approve a request to apply for a grant for five hundred thousand dollars with A E D C. It's a matching grant that we would match. And, uh, I'll start by telling you kind of how this started. Uh, it was nine months ago. Uh, I think Jeff Nielsen just came into, uh, into the chamber. And we got a request for, uh, buildings. And we sent him some buildings. And the company called back and said, we're interested in coming to Harrison and talking more. They came. And now we have, after nine months of work, even though we're just asking for grant approval, we have an opportunity here, and we decided now is the time to share everything with the community about this. It's an opportunity to put a hundred and fifty jobs here in Harrison, right on the square. And we're extremely excited about that. I want to introduce the man who started it, Jeff Nielsen. And then he has a special guest, and we have a video.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Honorable C. Council, thank you for this time to speak. Uh, the mayor teed it up really, really well. This is an outstanding opportunity for Harrison. I, I didn't go as far as say it's a, you know, a once in a decade opportunity for us to really grow the community in a substantial way. You mentioned a hundred and fifty jobs. That's, that's the proposal that, that's on the table. Uh, but it's just not that. And, you know, before I go too much into depth, I do want to recognize Mayor Jackson and the council and the voters having the forethought to implement a quarter cent economic development tax when you were looking at building out Creekside Community Center. If not for that, we wouldn't be anywhere near where we're at right now with this company. If the company's name's Provalis, we wouldn't be able to do what we're doing with them right now. Y'all having that foresight to do that, really laid the groundwork for what we're working on now. So kudos to, to you and to the voters of Harrison. And, and what we're talking about, again, it's a company called Provalis. And what do they bring to, to the community? It's a great opportunity for us to, it's not just bringing in another employer. You're bringing in another industry into, into Harrison, into the community in the form of I T. It's a hundred and fifty well-paying jobs with a hundred percent healthcare. Uh, they're going to be working with the North Arkansas College to develop up training programs to teach these individuals who are going to be working in the company, you know, what they need to know so that they can step in and do that. Uh, you know, and, 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 and Dr. Pratt kind of touched on this a little bit too. This is an opportunity to bring good paying jobs to the young people of our, of our community here. Gives them a reason to stay here, to. to the young people of our of our community here, gives them a reason to stay here, to grow here, to to raise a family. Uh, I think that's one of the biggest, biggest opportunities this company brings to us. Um, a little bit about Provalis, they are again, an IT company. They're look, they have nine locations. They're located in seven states. They're a growing company. Um, we, between the mayor and I, we have contacted the mayors of all the cities that they are currently located in. And to a person, they all said we would bring them back again in a heartbeat if they have given the, given the option. I spoke to several of the economic development representatives for those, for those towns. Growing reports from from them as far as the the work that they brought in, how easy they were to deal with. Uh, one of the towns game is had done an economic study where they pointed out that they brought in eight million dollars annually into their little town. And created, and for every, say, six jobs that Provalis created, there was one job created organically within that town, basically a support position to help facilitate the work that the company was doing, either the restaurants or support of some kind. Uh, I mean, that's, that is amazing. And their Provalis's business model is one where they prefer to locate, where they, they do locate rural communities. All of the locations that we talked about, all the people that I, that the mayor and I spoke with, whether they're bears or the economic developed people, they were all in small rural towns.
Yeah.
The ones that I quoted was from uh, Jasper, Texas. Uh, but I mean, they're located, as you see on the chart, there's, you know, nine locations in seven states. Um, they're active within their communities, uh, and they're pro veteran, which obviously we all know we have a very large veteran population here in Harrison. So um, trying to think what I missed. So economic development for the towns, you know, again, I talked to, there's, they all came back blowing reports, everything was you know, nobody, I, I hunted high and low to try and find a downside to this company. I couldn't find one. I'm still looking, but I couldn't find anything. Um, and you know, with that, you know, I'm happy to talk more about to you about all the details I've found, if 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 you have the time or if you're interested. But I think from here, I'd really like to hand it over, Mr. Will Rosick, he's the Vice President of Operations and Facilities for Provalis. And he can tell you in his own words exactly what this company is proposing, what they want to bring to Harrison. Will?
You should have the video come up, Will.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, didn't make me much to say, but I'll try to find something to say. Uh, I do want to start with this video and just kind of give you a little bit of background on this video. This was funded by a third party. Who had heard about our story, wanted our story told, and they came to our center, our very first center we opened up in Bruton, Alabama, which is down on the Florida Gulf Coast. So everything you see in this video is filmed uh, either in our center or around the town. So uh, it gives you a pretty good highlight uh, uh, overview of the company. So let's watch the video and then we'll have some additional comments. Thank you.
Actual David.
There we go.
Alabama, which is a small southern town. Has what I would call a very honest society here. You know, if I think of somebody whose grandfather stood on a log and rolled that log to the physical and walked back, I think he came from a pretty good stock here.
So what we've experienced in rural America is what we call the brain drain. And it was certainly a focus when I was in economic development, but the idea is that our young folks are having to leave our rural communities to seek opportunities elsewhere.
You're always looking, if you're the mayor, to provide a better future for the people that live here or the people that want to come back here. Provalis was that opportunity.
Our focus at Provalis is to be able to keep our young folks in the communities and make sure that they're our future leaders. I mean, it's going to take our young folks staying in our communities for the future generations.
Provalis is a people business and what we do is we provide IT outsourcing services and business process outsourcing services. What's unique is we do it in small town rural America.
A big part of what we see in rural America is that people want to work and they want to work hard and they want to be proud of their work. Many of them either don't want to leave their hometowns because they're caring for family members or they can't. For some of them, it's even a lifeline. So having the chance for a corporate job with a growing career path is absolutely critical to their success and often critical to the health and well-being of their families.
We find that in rural America, there's just an attitude that's more welcoming, that's maybe a little slower pace, more accessible, less stressful, and customers love that experience. So it's kind of a little bit of a secret weapon for us.
I've been in the IT outsourcing industry for a long time. What I haven't been able to see done successfully until now is what Provalis is doing. Because we're revitalizing rural America and we're investing back in America, back in the communities that need it the most.
You walk our floor and you're going to see folks that weren't going to the paper mill, they weren't going to the lumber mill. So being able to be that opportunity for those folks who really got lost in our system is extremely unique.
Born from that idea was what we called mission with a margin, which is to create a business in rural America that would compete against these offshore outsourcers and would beat them on quality and value. And that's exactly what we're doing. Part of our value proposition is our ability to rapidly train up talent. The way that we're able to do it is really through what we call tech foundry.
Our training programs are really key in this because we can bring in people at all levels and spend time training them and getting them ready for the jobs. So that enables us to have this engine that continue to fuel itself and make sure that we're successful with all of our engagements.
And but it's not just IT training or the process training, the customer needs. It's really about how do you behave in a professional work environment? Because this might be the person's first commercial job. We've got a partnership with the Department of Defense called the Skilled Bridge Program where we take veterans and help them transition into private sector. We have some of the highest productivity of any provider. On a per hour basis, our people are higher paid than people that are offshore, but on an amount of work produced, we are a better value.
So we go into towns and we help kind of employ two hundred, three hundred people. That's a twenty to thirty million dollar impact to that local economy.
And you can imagine the multiplier effect of that. You can walk down the street here in Bruton and look at an entire row of buildings that were boarded up a year and a half ago, that now have boutiques, a coffee shop, a pizzeria. That's only here because of the money that's flowing through these facilities. So we're really proud of that.
We were able to see some green space come back in and really just improve the landscape of downtown. So it's been an amazing transformation in this community. Five years later, after opening up in this community, and if you don't get downtown early, you're not going to get a parking spot.
These are the things that you start to see from not just investing in the talent and the people, but the compounded interest of going into these communities and investing. So yeah, we're willing to not sleep and work hundred hour work weeks and see fifty percent growth year over year and continue to set those stretch goals because we're literally changing the lives of people that are in these communities and need it.
Almost every single case, and I can tell you, our quality is higher, our attrition is better, our attendance is better. And so you overall have a better product than any of the competition. And a lot of that is because, again, there's such a sense of pride in the community of wanting to do a good job of sitting side by side in a center with all of your coworkers on a day-to-day basis.
And so, yeah, you come into small town America and you get reminded what this country is about. There's probably eighty thousand cities like this across the country. We planes, trains and automobile to get to all of these towns. The question is, how fast can we all do it? And you know, time will tell.
We are now opening a center almost every quarter. So three to four centers a year for all of us that that live the mission. It's exciting to see that acceptance in the marketplace, that accelerated growth across this country.
It really comes back to the mission of the company. There's probably nothing better than to see an old warehouse that hasn't been occupied for twenty years, that you come in renovated into a super cool tech center, put two hundred and fifty people to work there that are now on a career path that was not even possible before. And when you step back and look at it, mainly what we say is, let's do it again.
Wow.
Well, I hope that gives you somewhat of an idea of a little bit about who we are and what we do. Uh, Mayor, do I have three minutes? Am I okay to?
You can take a little more.
Okay. Uh, I I do want to just give you a little bit of history on, you know, where we came from. Our story started in two thousand and twelve in Atlanta, Georgia. We had two couples that had exited the IT industry. They sold the business. They took a year off. They knew they wanted to come back into the IT space, but they wanted to do it a little bit different. They wanted to create a mission and then develop a company to support that mission. And what they realized in Atlanta at that time um, was there was a tremendous need to address hunger, specifically hunger in kids in some of the underserved areas in Atlanta. So that was the mission behind the company that they started in two thousand and twelve. That company was called Optimi. So we were born out of a company called Optimi. It is an IT uh, consulting and staffing firm, tremendous growth. Uh, they exploded in thirteen, fourteen. They uh, opened up in Dallas, Texas, Charlotte. Today, they operate in New York, Detroit, Chicago, and even to today when uh, we place a consultant or uh, or place somebody in staffing business, we set aside a certain amount of proceeds to feed children in all of those communities. So during all that growth, uh, around two thousand and seventeen, they started looking for a way to expand the mission. And they noticed a couple of things at that time. There was a tremendous push through that current administration to reshore jobs, bring jobs back into this country. And they were doing that. They did a fantastic job bringing uh, bringing those jobs back, but it was really heavily focused in manufacturing. They also noticed that we were still losing well over half a trillion dollars a year in IT being outsourced overseas. They also noticed that we were in a tremendous time of prosperity and we had been for well over twenty plus years. But that prosperity was really focused in the major metro areas. So for us, around the Gulf Coast, we've marched Atlanta, exploded Nashville, Dallas, Austin. These major metros were having tremendous prosperity and us out in rural communities were still really fending for ourselves. We had never really felt that prosperity. So they saw some opportunity there to not just keep these IT jobs in in the US, but drive them into the heartland of this country. Let's take the jobs to the people. Let's invest in rural America. Make a difference, not just in the communities, but in the lives of those that live in that community. So this really is about bringing jobs to the people. That was two thousand and seventeen. The Dallas name brand was born. We now operate as sister companies with Optimi and Provalis. Provalis actually stands for Providing Value from the US. In two thousand and seventeen, I was Executive Director of a five-county Economic Development Alliance. I received that very first phone call when they were exploring opportunities in rural areas. I live in Bruton, Alabama. I moved there twenty-seven years ago to raise my family because I wanted to raise my family in a rural community and I fell in love with that community. So I've been fighting for rural life ever since. As an economic developer, I was really focused on attracting industry that I thought we had the assets to support. I'm in the wood basket down there. So lumber, paper related, automotive corridor, aerospace is growing out of the Gulf Coast. And so when somebody called me and mentioned two hundred IT jobs, then they said the name Provalis and I Googled it, not one single thing came up. I hung up on them. Um, and so I am known in the company as the person that really stopped this train or almost stopped this train before it ever left the station. So Jeff, you did much better than me. You took our phone calls. So congratulations. Luckily, the company was very persistent. They called back and I started hearing the idea behind this company and understanding the mission. I went to Atlanta, I spent some time with the founders. I got to know the people behind the company, their heart, their desire to make a difference in rural America. I took this back to my local community. I got local leadership on board. We took this to our governor. He was traveling the state at the time, talking about modernizing our workforce and put an emphasis on our rural communities. And when we laid this on her desk, she gave us some funding out of her discretionary money that day and said, go make this project happen. So that's the kind of collaboration we had. Right from the start, we spent about six months, put the contracts together. We opened our first center in Bruton, Alabama in two thousand and eighteen. Um, fast forward to today, that center now is fifty thousand square feet and we're at about three hundred and twenty jobs in that community. And as you heard in the video, it completely transformed our downtown. I joined the company in two thousand and eighteen because I saw it as a tremendous opportunity to be able to expand this footprint and go and impact other communities and not just communities, impact other lives. We're well over a thousand employees now just on the Provalis side. And so certainly excited about the thousand plus people whose lives we've had a tremendous impact on. We opened up in Texas in two thousand and nineteen, South Carolina twenty, um, Oklahoma in twenty-two, and we are now in eight operational centers, three others under construction. Um, IT is a very broad term. So we do lots of different work. We we work now for uh, well over fifty companies. Typically, they are Fortune five hundred and larger companies. So our clients are all names you would have heard of. Several of them are fast food uh, franchises that you would have um, dined in. We are responsible for usually the applications that you may use on your phone for those fast food. We do a lot of work in application development. So um, cybersecurity is probably our fastest growing, artificial intelligence, network operations, security operation. So a multitude of different um, disciplines within the IT space. All of our employees are our employees. They're W two employees. They are just dedicated to work for um, some of those clients. We, uh, I think as Jeff, you mentioned, we pay a hundred percent of healthcare because we think that's the right thing to do. We want to invest in people. We want to grow people. We pay for the gym membership if they will use the gym membership so that we are encouraging healthy lifestyle choices. This really is all about growing people in the community. And if we're going to have a hundred, two hundred people, we're committing a hundred and fifty jobs, but that is just the beginning, really because that's all we can fit in this building we're talking about. So um, I'm hoping that there's a phase two to that. But if we're going to have that kind of resource in this community, where else can we have impact? What partnerships can we create in this community, whether it's education, um, outreach programs, charity programs, we're going to have several of our own outreach program uh, programs that we will start within this community. So we're looking for ways to make impact, grow people, find ways to keep our younger folks in this community and create sustainable careers. So um, with that, I know I'm well over three minutes, but um, I just wanted to make sure you understood a little bit more about who we are. Uh, certainly as a company and our desire to come in and have a real impact in this community. We love Harrison and we're excited to be here. So I'll open it up to any questions. Jeff, did I leave anything out I need to touch on?
No, I think you covered through the everything.
Okay.
Thank you.
I tried to get people.
Let's um, we have it on the agenda to um, we're requesting approval to uh, allow us to apply for the grant. Uh, and that's all we're asking at this time. We talked earlier tonight and we think we can get this whole thing accomplished in ninety days and complete everything. There's a whole lot that needs to be done, but we think we can get there. But tonight, we need to be able to apply for the grant. It expires in less than a week. I think next Wednesday, so we want to get it in and uh, that'll be very important uh, to us on the money. And I think Jeff mentioned earlier, we did call every mayor that they're operating in. Every single one said, it's absolutely the best thing that ever happened to their town. They said, these people do what they say. And that meant a lot to us, uh, because I know in the beginning, it sounded too good to be true. Uh, but we have done a lot of verifying that it's the real deal. And Harrison, when you think about it, when's the last time we recruited a company that brought a hundred and fifty jobs? Seriously, think about it. We have a lot of great companies here, but they're all all except for one that I know of with significant employees are homegrown. And now we have an opportunity to bring one in and add it. And it's, and when you can add it to downtown, my gosh, that's the icing on the cake. That's the cake, you know, because that'll boost downtown. We have several people we're working on to lease spots downtown. Once this is announced, they'll be signing. This is a, going to be a big deal to everybody. So if I can get a motion uh, to approve.
So move.
Can? Uh, no, well, we'll, we'll go to discussion.
Can we ask questions of the gentleman at the?
We will.
Go ahead, Reed.
Sir, could you describe how it is that uh, you raise the competency of uh, the employees that you hire from small towns who have zero experience in the IT world?
Yep, great question. Uh, you know, we are not in real America because we think there's a plethora of IT talent. Uh, we understand that we have to bring the training. Um, and it was certainly. And it was certainly what excited me when I had an opportunity to look through this company because I had recruited several companies that six months later called me asking, where's the workforce? Where's the workforce? And so here came a company that said, we understand the challenges in rural America, but we're bringing our own training. We are taking folks right out of high school. We're taking folks from behind a cash register, a lawnmower. You don't even have to know how to turn on a computer. We can start that basic. And we go through typically a three to four week foundational, what we call a boot camp. That's pretty intensive. You go through three or four weeks of pretty extensive training. That gets you your foundational I T knowledge. From there, you will go into a horse client specific, depending on where you're going to go in I T, training that could last anywhere from two to six weeks additional training. So we understand the challenges, but we do bring our own training. We will partner with local community colleges as well. We actually will share our curriculum with those community colleges in Bruton where we are. If they go through our training program, they actually get two credits at the college level because we've shared that curriculum with the two year system.
Point of order. I don't know if the the mayor's requested a motion before discussion. So should we not?
Well, he asked for.
The emotion second and then over first.
Right. But the mayor's requested a motion. But I'm just, I'm just saying, we don't have to grant that. We can go ahead with discussion prior, but.
Go ahead and ask questions.
Yeah. So I've got a lot of questions. Wayne, you were going to ask one as well.
I got the copy of the ordinance and I read it, and I have a couple of problems with the way the ordinance is written itself or the resolution is written. But I've been on a computer four hours today. And I found out just like this said, the company is ProVal US. It's Provalis. It's Optima Professional. And my first question is, how much floor or foreign influence does your company have? How many countries across seas are involved with Optima?
Zero, zero. We are one percent U S citizen workforce.
I was reading the Board of Directors on the Optima, and I kind of had the feeling that they were quite a bit of foreign influence in it. And.
They're they're out of San Francisco.
Okay, well, the board, if you read the bios on the board members on Optima, you you're led to get a different feeling on that. And your training and everything that you mentioned here, I've I found exactly the way you said it. The boot camp and everything I was impressed with, some of the things that you were doing, you're impressed with. But this is a call center operation, correct?
No.
Because when you look it up on the internet, it refers to it as a call center. And I needed verification on that particular amount of information that's out there on the internet about it. And also I did, I read all the reviews that I could find on it. I went through Better Business Bureau stuff and everything that I could find on it in that four hours. And I didn't find anything real negative. But I would say ninety nine percent of Harrison doesn't know who Provalis is, and they don't know what you do. The one thing I found on the reviews, and I want to ask you, and not as negative, but what kind of turnover does the company have in your employees?
Turnover after sixty days is less than five percent. In that first sixty days, folks will figure out that I T may not be for them. So attrition is pretty high going through some of the boot camp. I T might sound cool. Cybersecurity might sound cool, but when you get in there and dig in and realize what you're doing, it may not be for everybody. So once you tread out of that and get onto the floor, or once you stay in boot camp, come onto the floor, attrition is much, much lower than industry standard. As for the call center, we very often get locked into the call center. I will say that about fifteen to twenty percent of our work may be phone related, never outbound. It would only be inbound. But we consider that a good thing. That gives us some lower skilled jobs that some folks may be able to move into. And then from there, we can invest in skills and move them out of those jobs into more complex work, into the I T space.
I did find that on there too. And it shows that there's going to be a hundred and fifty employees here in five years, right? How many original employees are you going to start with? Do you know? What is your first crew?
First crew?
Yeah.
We will start typically with classes of about thirty coming through that training center.
Okay. So the hundred and fifty, is that spanned over five years?
That's over five years.
Okay, so it won't be.
Typically meet that much quicker, but we certainly don't want to try over it.
You can go, you can go over one fifty two, right?
One fifty is the minimum we guarantee that we're going to bring.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My other question was going to be to the council in reference to the ordinance or the resolution. Last year, and year before last, when we started the Economic Development Funds to be awarded out, did we not set a limit on the amount of those that we would do?
I don't remember.
When we, when we did the UPS and the base, we had.
Well, now, that's a different situation. This is money from the tax. And we limited it that time with all, we we limited it to a hundred thousand for those. But that's, that was the vote of the council at that time for those projects. We didn't limit what we would do in the future. For example, to Councilman Ragland's point, there's some of us that wanted to hold that money back, get like a million dollars in it and buy land for a new industrial park. So you're correct that those two projects were a hundred thousand, but that's all we were willing to give at that time. We didn't limit it in future projects.
Okay.
So I've got a question. Why Harrison? How did you pick us? What criteria?
So I have a team that that does research, and as Jeff knows, we we actually reached out, you know, to you. So really, it starts with geography, meaning we go and plot major metros. We do not want to be anywhere near a major metro. We are truly a rural focused company. So we draw two hour circles outside of the major metros. We plot military bases or heavy military influence because, as we mentioned, we are a veteran friendly employer. And then from there, we start looking at some of those communities that fit our model of between five thousand and fifteen thousand. Those are kind of the communities that we target. And we will certainly make a list of those, and then we will go through and really start diving into those communities. Start looking at education systems, start looking at quality of life. And sometimes cities, you know, will eliminate themselves in some of that. And then we get that list down to, you know, somewhere between six and ten, and we start reaching out and we start having conversations.
So for example, and I'm going to ask this question just for clarity, I guess, or well, more for curiosity, were you aware of the the our economic development tax? Does that add?
No, we were not aware of that.
Yeah.
If you are approached by a company that's considering your services and one of your competitors, say in Bangalore, India, how would you convince that company that you're the superior option? How are you better?
So, great question. And, you know, it it is exciting now that, you know, we opened our first center in two thousand and eighteen. You know, we finally got out of that startup mentality. Again, we're partners with Optima. We're just two, we're brands under one umbrella. But the Provalis brand really started in two thousand and eighteen. We have now matured to a level where we get to say no more than yes. And so I will tell you, if there's a company considering us versus somebody in India, and they are strictly focused on bottom line, we cannot compete with that. We cannot touch labor rates in India. So we have to have value add, which means we look for these companies. And when you look at the brands we represent, I think you'll see that. We look for companies that have the same values that we have, and that is creating jobs in America. We look for companies that understand the meaning of taking jobs to people, investing in rural America. We have to have that value add. And so we don't compete on price alone. We look for those companies that understand what our mission is, what we're trying to do. They understand it, and they want to partner with us and help make a difference.
Thank you.
So the census in Bruton, how many employees? Three hundred and twenty? You have a thousand in the rest of your centers? So.
A little over.
Yeah. So like I say, as far as comparison to Harrison, is there, we mentioned Jack for Texas.
City size comparison. Talalqua, Oklahoma would probably be the closest. This is on the larger end of most of our communities. When you do the research, you'll see we're typically in five to eight thousand. Talalqua, five fifty five hundred.
Yeah, okay.
Talalqua is about fourteen thousand population.
Okay.
And we just acquired our second building there. We will will well exceed our goal in that community.
And you know how many, I'm sure you do, but how many have you have you got employed in Talalqua?
Almost two hundred there. And that's simply because we're out of space.
And you're coming to Harrison.
I don't know if you saw the map, you know, they're down there in Alabama, and they're working their way northwest. And that seems to be a plan for the company. I want to share one thing that somebody in the audience shared with me just now. Wayne, I'm sure you might want to check it again, but it says Optima is not a foreign company at all, but Optima is foreign. So you might have looked at, you know, changed the I to an A and.
Maybe with Optima, so always make sure it's Optima and with an I.
I understand.
And it showed that Optima is father company or the parent company for Provalis is what it is.
We actually operate as sister companies.
Okay.
So we have Optima, Provalis, operating really in two different worlds, but we all roll up into one company. And we proceed with the vote?
Yep, absolutely.
There's no motion. Yeah, there's motion.
There is a motion.
Yeah. Do we have a motion to approve the request to request grant?
So moved.
And we got that from Larry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Oh, more discussion.
More discussion. Here we go.
Okay. So salary. We we heard about you paying for health insurance. What's generally the salary range of the individual?
Average salary is going to fall between eighteen fifty and twenty one dollars on average.
Okay. Are any of those salaried positions or is that just?
All right, so.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, we typically bring folks in at around fifteen dollars. And from there, it's investing in their skill set to grow them into, you know, a middle class wage.
Right. Why the Harrison Square?
So downtown's our motto. That is part of the mission. We feel like if we want to have impact in the community, we want to be a partner in the community. We want to be visible. We want to be downtown where we think that that part and the character of this community is. There were many communities we went into that were ghost towns. And so the idea was revitalization. When I go into your downtown, I don't see them. Y'all obviously put forth an effort to have a vibrant downtown. So we're certainly not here to be a savior for downtown. We're hoping maybe we can take it to the next level if we put a couple hundred people downtown.
You're going to really help.
Well, I'm going to tell you this, and counsel, excuse me, but we've been trying to get an entertainment district down there to get somebody to buy it. And what has occurred is people are waiting for somebody. But we had a micro brewery supposedly going to go in, and we're going to have three or four restaurants, and no one would ever take that that chance. Now, the money that we, the tax that provides this opportunity is exactly for these types of purposes. And so this is what we want to use. If if the council or the city decides this, what we use it for, this is the type of thing that we intended with that tax money. And the best benefit to the mayor's point is to be able to get it downtown and make that vibrant again.
I wondered anywhere, but downtown is unbelievable right now. Yeah.
I'm done.
Okay.
So do we have the building already downtown?
We have a couple we're looking at. Yeah.
Perfect. And then are we still interested if we don't get the grant?
Yeah, we hope so. We don't know. We need that grant.
Right.
And we're pulling out all the plugs to try to get it.
Okay.
It's going to come in real handy.
And I want to mention one thing. You said we get this done in ninety days. We're talking about this portion of it, finalizing contracts.
Right.
I just don't want to sit there.
No, no, you won't be, yeah, you won't be hiring in ninety days, but it's not going to take a long time after that. So they will be in business hiring and having people in that building before my terms up.
Offer a vote?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, great. Thank you. Hold on, folks. Don't leave, but I know this is big. We have a couple of things, and they're going to go quick.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You have one citizen come.
I'm sure that's Liz.
Yes.
Come on up, Liz. Here we go.
Well, have you met Liz? Liz, Will.
Liz? I wanted to make it clear to Liz. Yeah, good job, Will. Thank you for that. We could.
Mr. Mayor, can she just speak from there? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Can she just, well, she's got here now.
Yeah, she's up here.
Ms. Torgerson, we need you to make clarification of what you're addressing. You only put call me last, please. And we, for the record, we need it identified, please.
Oh.
Topic.
Okay, just a couple of things. Sorry, I blew it off my phone. First, okay. This is.
Where's the mic there, Liz?
Just the general business, Liz Torgerson. I actually have a question with regards to grant. We'll do that.
And actually, before you start speaking, I need you to be sure and tell us what the topic is so we can identify for, you know, top the sign in sheet. Need to know what you're talking about.
Well, part of it is a square.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Square. Also, part part of another question or just another topic is with regards to committee meetings. First one, committee meetings. It would be helpful for our public to have the committee meetings be publicized with the actual dates and times and place of the committee meetings, i.e. the alcohol license board.
Uh huh. What are you referring to? We do publicize those.
The last one, it was just publicized, didn't have a time on it, and then.
Which one was that? We have not had a, I'm sorry, it was full. Yeah. It would have been corrected. Yeah.
But just the different committees, since you all don't have a specific committee meeting, you hold true council meetings. The general public does not know what the committees have been discussing. You actually are just voting on it, whereas you have the opportunity for the public.
On the committee meetings, it needs to be public, Liz, and I would expect you to be there.
That's fine. Well, you're lucky. Anyway. Okay, so first off, I want to say thanks to the fire guys and E N Ts for showing up and putting us with my helpful commentary that I felt, as well as my humor. Okay, thank you. Guys were great, even the. Also, I would like to request, or at least bring it back up, to bring the Friday night music on the square and bring it back. One that allows folks to enjoy the music at no cost. No long list of regulations and rules, plus the businesses that are there like Nino's and others benefit from the patronage of the people that are there. Again, just to bring it back, and I'll call out, I don't know if it's the Rotary Club or if it's Matt Bell.
There was Rotary and Matt Bell. Yeah. You know, I don't think.
Since I had to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Give her a little more time, James. She she hadn't had two minutes.
The Creekside Concert. I went to the first one that we had. Um. I was led to believe that the there was going to be indoor facilities made available, but instead we had a porta jones. Okay.
There will be the next one.
Jones were nasty, and I'm just going to leave it at that.
Okay, and we know that.
Out of toilet paper, your hand washing stations.
Yeah.
At the paper towel.
We know that. That was our first one.
Um, also, the grounds themselves. Um, also, the grounds themselves, just some of the ruts and everything and I'm.
I know it rained a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that. Um, also, someone else asked me to bring this up. I don't know all the specifics on it. So I'm kind of hesitant to act as bring it up, but it was about the, I'm not gonna bring it up. This is for good.
Okay.
Right up, because I don't have all the information on it, so I'm not gonna bring it up.
Okay, come to call our office anytime.
But anyway, um, the other question that we just had sitting back here was. Um, with regards to bringing in the new business, why is there a need for grants? I mean, I, could you not purchase the bill?
Us money.
But I mean, if a new business comes in, wouldn't they purchase the building themselves?
They might go somewhere else if somebody else were to.
Present and all that later. We don't have the numbers, but that'll come later. Yeah.
That's. Cool. But anyway, yeah, just the music on the square. It would be kind of nice.
Okay.
For those folks. And it and it wouldn't take away from Creekside.
No, we don't. We don't care about that.
All right, man. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, she is done and I have a comment. Thank you all for staying. I wish you were all women right now. And uh, you'll understand why here in a minute. Uh, you're gonna be the first people to hear this, promise first. After you hear it, Donna's gonna click a button and it's going to Facebook. Because this is something we're very proud of. We've been working on this for a long time. This, I'm gonna read what's gonna appear on Facebook. Ever since becoming mayor, one of my top priorities has been to recruit. TJ Maxx to our community. And today I'm thrilled to share some exciting news. Back in two thousand and twenty, TJ Maxx had planned to open. In the former J C Penney. Location. In the mall. Unfortunately, the pandemic hit. And like many companies, they pulled back their expansion. Later, that space was leased to Harp's Grocery Store. But we never gave up. Over the past few years, we have stayed in close contact with TJ Maxx. Working, keeping the Harrison, keep Harrison on their radar. And now I'm proud to announce that they have finalized the lease. To move into the former Big Lots location. That's right, TJ Maxx. This is ba- this is, this is extra big to me because it was one of two things on a list of twenty that I haven't completed. But I know it's also real big. It's a big win for the city. Not only does TJ Maxx bring a great shopping experience. But the brand itself also attracts other national retailers. It's a catalyst for the future on behalf of the city hall, and I know the Chamber of Commerce feels the same. Congratulations, Harrison. I'm finally getting TJ Maxx.
Can I, can I get a raise?
Thank you. Thank you. Um, motion to adjourn?
Let's go to the house.
Okay, thank you all.
He didn't even know, Larry.